Okay, the last thing. You don't feel comfortable before a policy. And load up the shade and take them to the job site, which is easily by county road. And once you get to the job site, get out to the pothole, let the pothole with cold mix, clean the area off, and apply the mask. Once the mask is applied and down, they use torches to come by and heat up the edges and then use the flat irons to go across and make the transition from existing asphalt to the mask transition.
Well, this is.
As you can see, that's an area that has been completed most recently.
She loved his.
Put the back while you're on the road. And it takes twenty minutes for the application to dry. And as you see, residents are already riding on it. And since using the crap coat patch, the complaint volume on potholes have been minimal. And it's been very beneficial to the road. We are very pleased with the piece of equipment due to the fact that it does require a bunch of personnel to office itself, tour guys with the office, and apply the product to the existing asphalt. And we are extremely pleased to have this because we can free up other personnel when you would have to bring in possibly five or six other personnel to do it any other way. So this has taken us a lot of time and money.
Actually, I thought zoning matters, we're gonna be on this one, and I'm so glad.
Or less like a demo for us to come out looking for a permanent, more permanent fix to the roads.
See, I could not have done it today.
One more one reached out to us and told us they had something for us and bring about those demo.
I have words to die.
And demoed for us. We got with them on a rental. They brought it out and let us rent it for a possible. Got a lot done on some high-volume roads. And there was a half hour or two years ago. We had had as near many complaints as we had before. Because like you say, that's a high pressure.
Okay, she doesn't wanna do it, so she's trying. She's working hard.
If there's anything urgent, you know, other than, you know, that can wait till.
Man, I wanted to be at the thing yesterday, and I wanted to be at the thing Saturday. But so did I.
American Revolution. Sitting next to that.
Oh, snap.
Here we go. Welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners' Regular Meeting. It is Monday, April 3rd, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. I would request that you all please silence, all sell your phones and all other electronic devices. If those of you that haven't been here before, you'll be able to follow along on the agenda on the wall. If you didn't get a piece of paper from the back with the agenda on it, you'll see exactly what the commissioners see on their screens. We have one item that needs to be addressed before officially starting the meeting this evening when doing the after agenda for the work session on Friday, March 24th, 2023. It came to our attention that the board never adjourned the meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn the work session for Friday?
We just left.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Are we getting paid by the hour?
We did, yeah.
At this late time, I'd like to ask Reverend, Reverend, Zach Holmes, pastor at the Grace Paradise Fellowship Baptist Church, to deliver the invocation, followed by Commissioner Dutton to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
I didn't see Stephanie nodding and smiling at that request, but I guess it was okay with her.
I left before they adjourned.
She had called.
I want to say thanks once again to my commissioner, D3, Ms. Rita Johnson, for this invitation. It is an honor and a privilege to be able to give the invocation. Let us pray. Lord God, we come right now with thanksgiving and gladness in our heart. Father God, as we in a holy week, we thank you for the sacrifice that you made so that we may have a right to the tree of life. Lord God, we ask that you just govern, lead, guide, and direct this meeting, these leaders and their staff to make decisions best for all constituents concerned. And we ask, Lord God, you continue to cover us, watch over us, protect us. And we just thank you once more and again for all that you have done, all that you're doing, and all that you will do. And this is in Jesus' name we do pray. Let every heart say amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Flag.
The Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Item number four, public hearing. Conduct a public hearing on Street Light District for Sun City Pods 21, 22, 23, Del Webb Boulevard Extension, and Peachtree Parkway. Have a motion to open public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Five zero. We're in now in public hearing. Dr. Ledbetter, is there anybody who signed up for the public hearing?
No, sir. No one has signed up for public hearing.
In case you didn't, you came and forgot to sign up, would you like to come forward and speak on Light District? All right.
Motion to adjourn should come out of the public hearing. Second.
All right, motion to close. And a second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Five zero. We'll vote on this in the next meeting. Presentations slash proclamations. The National Society for the Daughters of the American Revolution would like to recognize Spalding County employees for their response to the recent tornado events. Dr. Ledbetter.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would recognize Ms. Judy Parker.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Commissioners, Dr. Ledbetter. On behalf of the Pulaski Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, we would like to thank and express our appreciation and awe at the work done by Spalding County employees after our January 12th tornado. We're appreciative of the fact that we are all still here, that our road is cleaned up and we can get to town and back, and for the hours that were put in by the number of employees. And I have a certificate of award. Dr. Ledbetter, if I give this to you, could you please pass that on?
We're gonna come up and we're gonna have a photo.
Okay. I want you to pass this on to your employees and let them know that we do recognize the hard work. They do.
Thank you.
Before we have a picture, could I say one other quick DAR thing?
Yes, ma'am.
2026, all right, two and a half short years away. America will recognize its 250th anniversary as a country. DAR has already placed the monument, the historic monument, in the memorial park. It's by a tree. Go all the way in. It's there by the tree. And I'm hoping that Spalding County, surely somebody besides me remembers 1976. Is anybody besides me alive that remember our celebration in 19... Come on, Spanky. Somebody's gotta be. But I'm hoping Spalding County will want to do something. And not only will our chapter be volunteers for whatever, but I would personally volunteer to be on the America 250th Committee. And I already have pages of information that DAR has provided for us of activities and things we can do. So please, don't let them forget this, Kathy. Okay. So thank you for your time.
Are we centered up there, camera people?
Come this way just a bit.
Don't give my shoes.
I wanted one more, Judy. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we got two years to work. That year and a half.
Item, item number two. Consider a proclamation to recognize Telecommunicators Week on April 9th through the 15th and show our appreciation to the Spalding County E-911 Operations Commitment and Devotion to Public Safety. Dr. Ledbetter.
Mr. Chairman and board members, we would like to read the proclamation this evening in recognition of 911 Public Safety Telecommunicator Week, April 9th through 15th, 2023. Whereas this week is a time to show our appreciation and to recognize that our health, safety, and well-being are often dependent on the commitment and steadfast devotion of public safety telecommunicators because emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical service, or other, other critical services. And when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Spalding County 911 Communication Center. And public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. These dedicated men and women are the first responders and are more than anonymous, they are more than anonymous voices on the telephone line. They are local police, fire, and medical professionals who use public safety telecommunications to quickly respond to emergency calls. And emergency responders rely on their knowledge and professionalism to make critical decisions, obtain information, and quickly dispatch needed aid. Public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And public safety telecommunicators at the Spalding County 911 Center have assisted with the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. The work of these unseen first responders is invaluable in emergency situations, and each of these dedicated men and women deserve our heartfelt appreciation. Citizens place their trust in these individuals not just this week, but every week of the year. And each telecommunicator exhibits compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job assisting those in need. Now therefore be it resolved, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize the men and women of the Spalding County 911 Dispatch Center whose diligence and professionalism keep our county citizens safe. Signed, Clay Davis, Chairman of the Spalding County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. On behalf of the Spalding County now on, we'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners and Dr. Ledbetter for the proclamation. We look forward to sending each and every one of you come out and help us celebrate next week. Thank you.
Chairman, I would just like to make a comment, please, if I, if I can, I know it's out of order. I am just so proud of the Spalding County E-911 Center. All of the, I was just at a conference last week with EMT, EMTs, 123s, and paramedics. And one of the things that they said that people that they come back to talk to later after an incident, the people comment about the professionalism from the time they pick the phone up and speak to someone at 911 until someone arrives on the scene. And it takes a lot for a person to be able to decipher the craziness out of, you know, a 911 phone call and still remain professional and still remain respective and keeping their calm. So, you know, they're the people that are easily and quickly forgotten because they're not jumping on the chest. But if they don't do their job, the rest of it won't happen. So I just think, you know, grateful for it, that our service has worked so well.
Yeah, I think, I think you say that for all of us.
And just as an aside, if it's all right, Mr. Chairman, I would encourage each of you to go by the 911 Center and just sit for 30 minutes. The professionalism that these men and women show is just phenomenal with the amount of information that's coming to them. They are extremely busy. And it's, it's great to be able to go over it just for 30 minutes and see the amount of workload that our telecommunicators go through on a daily basis. Thank you.
Item number three. Staff to provide an update on the status of House Bill 542 that repealed the Act incorporating the city of Sunnyside. Dr. Ledbetter.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to provide a quick update on what House Bill 542 offered. It was a bill to be entitled, an act to repeal an act, to incorporate the city of Sunnyside to provide a new charter for the government of said city. The, it provides for the transfer of duties and obligations to Spalding County to provide for the transfer of all legal rights, privileges, and assets to Spalding County to establish a special tax and service district for outstanding bonded indebtedness and other obligations, to provide for the transfer of all federal and state permits and licenses, to provide for the transfer of ongoing judicial actions, to provide for the continuation of zoning and land use regulations, to provide for future proceeds of special and regular local option sales tax, to provide for the designation of the historic Sunnyside community, and to provide for the related matters and to repeal conflicting laws and all other, for all other purposes. The, the city of Sunnyside will stop being a city on January 1st of 2024. And Spalding County will be required to pick up the services for that former jurisdiction. That will mean that in our fiscal '24 budget, we will need to add some additional funding to do maintenance for the city, to accept the funds that are currently under their checking account for such things as their SPOLOST projects. They did have SPOLOST projects that were designated. So we will need to manage those projects until they're completed. And I think the, the board had a copy of the SPOLOST projects that were still under consideration by them. But this will be an impact to our fiscal '24 budget. And it's sad to see the city move from an incorporated city to a historic community. So the legislation was signed, it's my understanding that the legislation was signed by the governor this past week. So this is a bill that was signed and agreed to. And more to come as we move forward in our budget process for fiscal year '24.
What, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. What about, on the email that you guys sent us, are we gonna have to do something different to create a, are they already in a fire district?
They are already in a fire district. And the legislator in, the legislators inside of this bill actually created the, the tax allocation district for us. So it's already allocated for the fire district.
Okay. And that is the only... We don't have any, any subdivisions or anything that, that are doing, have lighting, lighting districts, nothing of that nature. My only thing is, is that nothing really about Sunnyside is any of our comprehensive plans.
Correct.
So we're gonna need to look at making some amendments to see how we're gonna wanna grow it.
We, all of it would, well, just about all of it, correct if I'm wrong, would fit in the corridor plan we just approved, like it's, it's.
I think we kept the city limits out, though, because it was a city limit.
But that's what I'm saying, like, I think we could reincorporate it into that, like.
And, and just make that part of the Northeast Expressway over, like, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Yes, ma'am.
No, not me, I think that's.
Correct. And the, the legislation provides that the city of Sunnyside zoning ordinance continues as a county ordinance.
Okay. Any other comments about this? This is, you know, we don't do this ever. All right. Item number six.
This is a good thing.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I think the last census had them at 149 residents or something, like it was.
But continuity with the rest of the county will be huge for us, and that's our gateway from the north.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, item number six, citizen comments. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and the topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your comments to the board and not to individual commissioners or to the audience. Personal disagreements with individual commissioners or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as that relates to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speakers will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule. Dr. Ledbetter.
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up to speak this evening for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, minutes. Consider approval of the minutes from the Spalding County Board of Commissioners Extraordinary Session on March 20, 2023, and the Spalding County Board of Commissioners Zoning Public Hearing on March 23, 2023.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Thank you. Item number eight, old business. Lift from the table and consider recommendation from the Parks and Leisure Services Advisory Commission to allow use of City Park for the Doc Holiday Festival. Do I have a motion to lift the table?
Motion to lift, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Dr. Ledbetter. TJ, I'm sorry.
TJ, you's up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff would recommend this recommendation and also provide you with three items to consider in reference to our recommendation. The area will be prepped as usual for any other weekend by contractor maintaining the park. No special accommodations or on-call services will be provided that weekend, including trash pickup. And the utilities will be covered in our FY '24 budget, and we will be able to analyze those for the FY '25.
Okay. Are we gonna put the mobile bathroom, that kind of stuff out there?
Mobile bathroom?
I think we normally do that.
That's correct. We can do that.
All right. Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, do you, is there any comments or anything from the park and recs?
No, I think that we, we're understanding now that the request is for in the next fiscal year, which apparently there is going to, you know, there should be funding for that. My question would be, what do we do in the interim? And when will we allow parks and rec to be able to lease out pavilions? Will we, will we still go into July before we're allowing them to do that? And if we allow them to do that, how will we, how will we manage? How will we, well, right now, if we had to have something out there, we would have to get, hire somebody to cut the grass. Or we'd have to take a grass crew from someone else, somewhere else.
We're contracting.
To do that.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
We contract for it.
We're working on the bid right now and hope to have it out to bid then the next week and a half, week, one week, two weeks. And then it will have to be out to bid for 30 days.
Okay. And hopefully from that point, because we, I mean, we're, I spoke with Kelly today, and she, she's gone back and looked at the records from the city and, starting at this time of the year, those pavilions are all completely booked up into the fall. And right now, we're not booking anything. We're, we're not making any money just on it being there, which could help to offset the cost of maintenance until we do that. So, yeah, that would just be my concern. So hopefully we'll get that information and we'll be able to do something with that. Not really sure where that money's gonna come from, but I'm just saying it very quietly.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson, is there anything in here that you need, you think all the questions have been answered and everything?
I've got something to report back to the chamber meeting tomorrow morning, so.
Okay.
Is there, is there any chance that, that they would wanna start, like the contractor ASAP? And say, say it was $50,000 a month, I'm making up a crazy number, just so that it's a crazy number. And then maybe that could come out of commissioner contingency for those, you know, for May and June, or, you know.
Yeah, we would love to be able to do that. The plan right now, it sets, the RFP, it will be drafted and put out Friday. And when it's put out Friday, the way that Griffin Daily News is running now, it's three days a week. So it will not post until Saturday of next week. That would be the first posting for the RFP. We're, we're giving 14 or one month? Are we giving 14 days, the minimum, or we actually?
Thirty, we have to give 30 days.
Yeah, we're giving 30 days for the contractors to respond to the RFP. So that puts us well into May. And then we will bring it back to you the first week of June for consideration and award of the bid. That's as fast, yes, that's as fast as we can get it to you.
That really doesn't do anything to help that. Um, yeah.
I'm like, I'm, I'm not trying to be critical. I rare, I really rarely am. But like, we knew that we had the City Park last year. And like, we're just now doing something about it. That's, that, we really fell down on it. And I, like, we, we really fell down.
What would be, this is just like in my imagination. What, what would be the detriment if we asked TJ to adjust his budget?
Pull your, both of you pull your microphones.
Adjust his, his, not his budget, but and adjust his workload to at least provide once a month until July, cutting the grass and, and whatever it is at City Park.
That would be up to y'all.
I know, I mean, you can do anything if you have money, right?
Yes.
We'll do as instructed.
Well, I, I just think that, you know, it is, there is an expectation in this community that there's a certain level that you expect when you get to City Park. And I think that as, as, as Spalding County having leadership services, there is a level of excellence that we are. And it is obvious to everyone that we're not exercising that level of excellence. So couldn't we just come up to a little bit toward that by at least making some effort to get in there at some point and kind of, whatever you can do with one? and kind of, whatever you can do with one work crew in a day? But just not doing anything is gonna make it be humongous. Which, you know, we are, it's already humongous because we've had it since, what, November?
You could also consider asking the chamber and various civic organizations and service clubs if they would do some sort of volunteer day at City Park in preparation for Doc Holiday.
Because, yeah, we, it's not looking like what we wanted to look like.
Yeah.
And that way you could go ahead and start renting the pavilions in May if you had something like that done in April.
And with your blessing, since we're only talking just a couple of months, we could just shortlist a few contractors, and instead of doing a full RFP, we could run just a few contractors and get quotes by phone by three of them and put a contractor to work in a very short, short order.
That's what I'm feeling like.
All right, then that's what we will do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, you all good with this?
I'm looking at his face.
Yeah, get, get numbers for like, per time they would do it, and then let's see if we can get some rotary and exchange in Kiwanis to like, take some of those times away from him, you know what I mean?
Or just add two, because we're, we're gonna shortlist this and we're, we're gonna do it every 10 days instead of every seven days. So we may be able to pull on some civic organizations to support us in the, in the meantime.
The grass is extremely high.
It is, the grass is extremely high, and the courts need to be blown off and taken care of. I, I agree with you. All right, so we'll shortlist it just for the short term, we'll continue with the RFP and we'll get this moving forward very quickly.
Do we need to, uh, motion and vote on, does it need to be part of an agenda to create the committee to rename City Park? Because it's not City Park anymore, I know we just.
That's true.
We're still calling it City Park, but like, it's not.
Let's think through that a little bit.
It's a very good part, it's a very good point.
Let's, let's water that, plant that seed, let's all think through that and process a little bit on that.
Again, we, we knew we owned it in November, and like, it's, this is just like water just trickling through our fingers here.
We did have like, even the SDS was, but the, you know, going through that laws after that too, kind of.
SDS sealed, like.
Yeah, but, you know, we immediately went right into, I don't know, I didn't understand where there was.
And then, and then Steve was super sick.
Yeah, oh yeah, there was a lot going on.
But it's still like.
But January, I get it, he was, he got back, he got back to last, what, last month, he came back, so.
So we got a game plan.
Yeah.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
Uh, I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendation for the staff to fast-track finding services to do the maintenance and yard.
And, and to approve the recommendation.
Oh, and the recommendation to allow the Doc Holiday Festival to continue this year in September, September 6th or 10th.
Second.
All right, now a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, TJ.
Thanks, TJ. Item number nine, new business. Consider requests from Cindy Alexander to hold a National Day of Prayer at the Courthouse Veranda on Thursday, May 4th, 2023, from noon until 12:40. Dr. Ledbetter?
Ms. Alexander?
So, thank you, Dr. Ledbetter, wonderful county commissioners. Before I get into National Day of Prayer, I just need to say that I'm a ruler in this town, and we show the city park to all prospects, and we need for the grass to be cut. Just like we say to the school board, we need for the schools to have the grass cut. So please remember that when you, when you launch a committee. I am here on behalf of the National Day of Prayer, seeking your permission once again to utilize the Courthouse Veranda for our National Day of Prayer Spalding County event this year. It's gonna be May 4th, the time, proposed time would be 12 to 1. And you have graciously consented for, this will be the 17th year, and we certainly hope you will consent again.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, second. All right, I have motion and a second, any more discussion?
I've gone a few times, it's a fantastic event.
And that, and that, I'm glad you said that, James, because one year James did actually read the proclamation, and that was a wonderful addition to the service, and if anyone would like to do that again, just let me know so that I can have you on the agenda.
Okay.
Unless somebody else wants to do it.
Vice Chair, great thing, all right. All those in favor signify.
Have we got a motion?
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries, thank you.
So, and one more comment, pickleball court at the City Park would be so nice.
Gotcha.
But our championship court.
All right, item number two, consider request to cancel April 27th, 2023 zoning public hearing and move all items from that agenda to the April 17th, 2023 extraordinary session. Dr. Ledbetter?
We will be at the ACCG conference on the 27th, and we need to move those items back this way for, for zoning public hearing. That will mean that the meeting for the 17th will be a long meeting, so please plan accordingly.
So, I, I, can we have it on the 24th instead? I just, it's gonna be so much stuff on that 17th meeting. And it's gonna be Tomachichi, it's gonna be Minerva, it's gonna be Rehoboth Road, and then it's gonna be our regular agenda.
I, I won't be here on the 24th.
And a cemetery.
Yep.
What are the odds of us actually having the zoning meeting earlier than, instead of being part of the BLC meeting? Maybe, can we do that, like, maybe?
We have a requirement to post for the newspaper 14 days in advance.
But not, not just that, I think it also was brought up in a meeting by a very astute constituent that it has to, zoning stuff has to come, like, has to start after 5:30 or something like that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Like, it's like, when people can attend or some.
Yeah, I mean, I get it, I just, I just.
All right, all right, you're disappointed, I get it, I'm there.
The 17th is just, that's a lot.
So, yes, and a comment about that, if we're gonna do it on the 17th, everybody's gotta come prepared, really and truly. You've gotta read, think through, do all of that stuff ahead of time so that we can move through fairly quickly on each one of those.
You preach to the choir over here.
I say let's get her done.
Okay, all right, do I have a motion to change the date? Change the agenda from one time to the other?
Cancel the meeting.
Cancel the meeting and move this.
Cancel the meeting and move all the items from that agenda to the April 17th, 23 extraordinary session.
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion.
So that's a second? That was my move.
Oh, second.
All right, okay, I've got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Are there gonna be other items, other zoning items on besides these three items?
We're not putting any, anything else on the agenda for that evening.
Okay.
And there's gonna be a lot, a number of people coming in.
I'll bring coffee.
Yes, yes, citizens coming in to.
I'm gonna need a Mountain Dew.
All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number three, consider moratorium on the issuance of permits to allow the location of additional manufactured homes in existing manufactured home parks, which are located within the agricultural residential one, AR1 zoning district. Uh, Dr. Ledbetter or?
Newton Galloway.
Attorney Newton Galloway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This moratorium addresses a particular problem, the commencement and genesis of which starts in, excuse me, in the fall of last year. One of our parks has been purchased, and the developer desires to upgrade that, which is a good thing. But they also desire to increase the number of units that are there. And this has created a problem. Our zoning district for a manufactured home park is called for a planned manufactured home community. And that is under R3, R3 zoning class. To my knowledge, we have only one R3 piece of property, and that is Southampton. The remaining parks are in AR1. And the question was raised regarding how much the parks in AR1, which are non-conforming uses, could be expanded? Or could they be expanded as non-conforming uses? Now, our ordinance provides that a non-conforming use cannot be altered or extended or enlarged. And if there is a modification, our ordinance requires that any new development comply with the requirements of the underlying district, which would make the manufactured home addition have to comply with AR1. That said, there, there is case law that tells us that specifically applied to a manufactured home park, that a park can be altered or extended and new units added to the extent of the property boundary.
Of the property boundary?
Yes, the property on which it's located. There's a case, James, out of Coweta County and a case out of Douglas County, which sets that precedent. Now, that, that was not sufficient because we've had requests, well, how many can we add? How much can we do? And we don't know, and there is no guidance for this.
Just stack them up to the FAA.
We have, we have no guidance for this in state law, we have no guidance in our ordinance for this. And based upon the email that I provided to y'all today, you can see that the request has now been expanded to include all of the manufactured home park owners that own property in AR1. Now, we feel the best thing to do is to just calm this down for a minute and take 90 days so we can develop a policy for dealing with how a park can be expanded. When I say expanded, I'm talking about on the lot that it's on, within the boundaries of that lot, but just like you said, not stack them up on top of each other or immediately where the sidewalls are adjoining. We also have had issues in, arose in December regarding water service at some of those parks, and some, some of those owners are the ones that are now participating in the request to expand. There have also been issues at various times related to sewer service through septic tanks. These things are on a community septic tank. And to be candid, the Health Department has no idea, because I've talked with Ms. Wilson at the Health Department, they have no idea exactly what the capacity is. So before someone comes in to expand the park. We need to make certain that these services are adequate, that there's appropriate capacity for both water and septic service. So, for those reasons, what you have before you is a request for a 90-day moratorium that applies only to those parks that are non-conforming within the AR1 zoning district. It prohibits the issuance of a permit for a new manufactured home to be added to any of those parks for 90 days, but it does not impact someone's right who is living there to replace what they have. And in particular, particularly in light of the tornado damage, it does not impact a person whose home was destroyed or damaged from repairing it or replacing it as a result of that. Now, what I would hope we can do is develop policies for this which address AR1, but incentivize folks who have the parks to get them zoned properly to R3. If they're going to have the park, if they're going to operate the park, it is clearer and it is much more logical for that property to be zoned for the use to which it is being placed. But, as I said, we do not know, and we have no guidance from state law regarding how or what policy should be in place. I would point out that in the legislature of this past session, a bill was introduced that would, excuse me, protect the right of the park to expand irrespective of the underlying zoning district. That one did not pass. And to also address the moratorium, Senate Bill or House Bill 514 did pass, but to my knowledge has not been signed, which limits our authority to do a moratorium on things going forward to 180 days. But you can see that this is a limit to 90, this moratorium's limited to 90 days. And I don't know whether 514 has been signed by the governor, but we need to take.
Passed?
Yes, ma'am.
514 passed?
Yes, we need to, we need to take the time so that we are not in a circumstance where Ms. Morales in her, her office is confronted with an inundation of permit requests, when we don't know whether there's water, we don't know whether there's septic service available, and we don't have any standards for how many can really go there. And I can provide y'all with the two cases that authorize the expansions to the boundaries of the lot, but they're there, or the boundaries of the property.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, I totally agree with you on the need to be able to do this. But can you explain to us a little bit how this differs? When you're saying extend, you mean extend onto an existing home? Or just extend because I can, I have space for 12 more homes on, at the end of my property? That's the first thing. The second thing is like, in the cases of, you know, the tornado or there's just a mobile home that has, that's torn down, do we have an infill policy that is reflective in this AR1 or either in the R3? Because I know we do have some infill, we talked about infill in terms stick-built housing. But will, will we address that in, in what you're gonna be bringing back to us, the infill issue? Because if there is a, an infill ordinance related to mobile homes, then that's kind of conflicting with our saying that they can't replace.
Okay, infill, Commissioner, infill is tied to the zoning district on which the infill, or which governs the infill property.
Okay.
We have no infill areas zoned R3.
Okay.
So anybody who wanted to treat a manufactured home as infill would have to treat it as a special exception within the particular zoning district. Now, now let me go to the first question. Some of the most difficult cases we have involve what constitutes expansion or continuation of a non-conforming use. Let's assume you have a manufactured home park that has 12 units, and it's non-conforming. Theoretically, but for case law, you could take the position that the addition of unit 13 constitutes an expansion or alteration of that use. But we've got case law that says that. Now what we have is a circumstance that says if you do expand the use, then you've got to comply with the requirements of the underlying zoning district. So that would theoretically mean in AR1, a three-acre lot, a 1,500-square-foot house, and roof pitch. And that is a problem from the standpoint of being consistent with the development that is there. What, what I hope we can do is use this as an opportunity to clean up what we got, improve what we have, and at the same time, get criteria in place where we define how the non-conforming use can be either altered or enlarged.
All right, that was, you answered it.
All right, we had, I don't know whether y'all remember this or not, years ago, we've had to deal with the expansion of the Griffin Gun Club on their property out in the far eastern side of the county. That essentially raised the same issue because they're a non-conforming use. We had this similar, the, the other similar issue come up, that has come up, is the rock quarry in Rover's Atella Road, because they wanted to expand. Yet they are in AR1, and you've got to have approval for that. And we had to critically assess and determine what they could do. And so we, we, what we basically did in that case was take the position to the extent they had a DNR permit, they could expand to the scope of that DNR permit. Theoretically, you could say every time they blew dynamite out there. Theoretically, you could say every time they blew dynamite out there and got new rock out,
They expand.
it's expanded the quarry. And that's what makes these issues thorny and complex.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to approve the moratorium?
Motion to approve the moratorium.
All right, I have a motion, and I have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, 5-0. Thank you, Newton, for trying to get this thing.
Thanks, Newton.
We have a meeting scheduled, if Eve was still here, the first meeting will be Wednesday afternoon with the property owners, and then thereafter, we will schedule with the water, the fire, and the health department.
Okay.
Definitely the water authorities.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Report of the county manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a public notice that's being given out on the proposed amendments to the development impact fees. So, we have to have two readings for the impact fees, so this will be one of the considerations that we have on the 17th. We'll make sure that you have all of the necessary information before then. We discussed it at our retreat, so a lot of this will just be a reiteration of what we've already covered. But there is a requirement for two readings for this, so it will just be a first reading, and the second reading will come up in May. May 1st will be the night that we will vote on our impact fees. Wednesday morning, our upcoming Archway Executive Committee meeting at 8:00 a.m., we will be at the Senior Center this week instead of over at the Welcome Center. So look forward to seeing everybody there. Staff was notified by Georgia Emergency Management Agency and Homeland Security that we have been, we have satisfied the incentive standards outlined in GMA requirements for the federal, state, local disaster match policy that increases the state's match for disaster-related grant funds from 10% to 12.5%. And the letter is from Director James Stallings of GMA, and I just want to call your attention, and I'll make sure that each of you get a copy of the letter, but I wanted to call your attention to the last paragraph of Director Stallings' letter. He says, "Please accept my personal congratulations for this well-deserved achievement. GMA appreciates your hard work and dedication to emergency preparedness. Specifically, I want to recognize the Spalding County Emergency Management Agency and its director, Glenn Polk. Due to the Emergency Management Agency's commitment to excellence, Spalding County will be one of only a few Georgia counties to receive this benefit, the benefit of 12.5% reimbursement. On behalf of GMA, thank you for constantly striving to make your community and our state a safer place to live." This is in response to the tornadoes that came through January the 12th and the work that has been done in support of the federal declaration in order to get our funding back from FEMA. Just as an aside, the paperwork was filed last week for the first tranche of money coming back to the county. The request was a little over $4 million, and the conversation that I've had with our GMA representatives and with Chief Polk is that that money is expected to be back in our hands late summer. So that's great news for us.
Wow, I thought they started reimbursing us 18 months after December 18.
Yep, the 18 months is for the Hazard Mitigation Plan projects that we have. The monies that's coming back for the debris removal, we have done such a great job, and the consultant has worked very diligently to satisfy the application process that we were able to submit that, and we're looking forward to getting that money back to us very quickly.
Great news.
House Bill 542, we've already talked about the repealing of the act to incorporate the city of Sunnyside. The House Bill 189, just as an aside, there's two bills that I would draw your attention to, the Truck Weight Increase Bill. The increase would allow weight limits to 88,000 pounds by increasing the variance from 5% to 10% for vehicles hauling forest products, live poultry, cotton, animal feed, poultry waste, and other agricultural or farm products from a farm to be first point of market to, from the farm out 150 miles is what the bill states. And this has an impact on us financially because the trucks are gonna be operating in and around our county roads that the state does not maintain. We maintain these roads, so the trucks are gonna have a negative impact on our roadway system, and we would encourage all of our constituents to continue to reach out to our state legislators and ask them for funding, additional funding for L-MIG funds so that we can continue to resurface our roadways. That's gonna be an impact. And then the second is the legal organ. So, House Bill 254 modifies the legal organ requirements. This bill modifies that requirement in that, at the same time that the county submits a legal notice to be run by the legal organ, the notice can also be placed on their website, a website maintained by the legal organ, on a website maintained by a newspaper of general circulation that is not designated as the legal organ, or the Georgia Public Notice website. In the event that an error is made in the text or publication date of a legal notice required by the county, the legal organ is required to display the correct notice online within two days, and that correction serves to meet all legal requirements of adequate notice to the public. That's significant for us because that means we don't have to wait for an extended period of time to notice a meeting for your consideration. So, that's a good thing. That would be a positive for our community, that we don't have to wait for the following Saturday or the following week for legal notices to be run and set us back for a week or two, depending on when our meetings are for your consideration. So those are the two big notices that I saw coming out of ACCG this week. There will be more notices as they get a little bit more in-depth understanding as to how the legislators supported or moved bills through on the last day, which was last Thursday. Mr. Chairman, that's all my update. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Two things. I just had a question about SDS, again, kind of going back to that. I know we finished that in November. As far as like the services that we're talking about, so that doesn't start at the next physical year, that actually, is that immediate when we actually sign that? That actually adds up that, so it's not?
Yeah.
Okay. Whatever reason I thought it was.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'm gonna hold a lot of my comments till later, but I just want to make a point by saying, thank you, Steve, for a very productive retreat that we actually had. I think we covered a lot of ground. And I think we've got a good direction for the county, and I'm looking forward to having that implemented and having that shared amongst the department heads and a bunch of Tom and all that kind of good stuff.
Thank you.
That's it.
Commissioner Flowers-Taylor?
I just want to say, I hope you get to feeling better. You sound like you got something stuck up in the top of your head. That's all I had.
I want to echo Commissioner Johnson. We had a great retreat. That was really, really great. We, I think we got a ton done. It wasn't quite, as we saw tonight, as organized as we wanted it to be, but that was our fault because we were just, instead of following a wonderful agenda and plan that everyone else had, we just went, "Let's talk about, and then let's talk about this." And we got a bunch of stuff done, but I thought it was still great. I think we still got everything done except adjourning that we should have done. That said, the state legislature also just finished theirs. I'm just real sad that they didn't pass the school choice bill. They nearly had that, and I'm real sad for the residents of Georgia whose roads are gonna be absolutely destroyed by this, by this truckweight bill. Notice they put on their, oh, cotton and chicken, chickens aren't that heavy, and, you know, any other agricultural product like lumber, like lumber, the number-one agricultural product of Georgia by far. If you add up all the other ones, it's not as much as lumber. And they failed to mention that one, but of course it's included. And those lumber trucks, now with their increased weight loads, they get to drive on our roads, this is effectively an unfunded mandate by the state to repair roads everywhere, rural roads. These trucks are gonna drive across them and break them like tempered glass, and then water's gonna get in there, and just, you're gonna see potholes. It's gonna be an absolute travesty. And, you know, people are gonna be calling us five here going, "Hey, there's a pothole." They need to call their state house and say, "Yep, they knew it was gonna happen, they approved it, they voted for it, we fought them every step of the way, ACCG fought them every step of the way, they forced it on us." And now they've just approved lumber trucks to destroy every single road we've got. And just get ready for that, because that's 100% what's gonna happen. That's 100% what's gonna happen, and it's just a shame. That's all I've got.
Okay. I'd like to follow up on the retreat comments. I thought the conversation was excellent there. Not all of us saw it the same way, but each of us was willing to listen and move around and find out, hey, this is the best thing for our citizens, so I was extremely pleased with that. I think each one of us changed our minds on different issues as we went through and listened to everybody else's comments. Second thing, budget is getting ready to happen. This is a tough budget year. Everybody needs to understand that the budget this year is just gonna be as tough as we've ever had to deal with, considering the disaster and everything else, the new things that are coming on at us. For the folks that submit budgets to the county manager, let's remember we have a process. It goes to the county manager. After the county manager has put the process to work and has comes up with a budget, then it comes to us and we will look at it, trying to get to us individually or as a group beforehand. The process is not the way we do the process. We follow the process. Everybody I know wants more money, and they know how tight it's gonna be, but trying to come and talk to each one of us or trying to speak to the board as a whole is not the way our process works. Once we get through with the county manager does his thing, then we'll turn around and do that. Once again, the 17th is going to be jam-packed. We need to make sure we're really ready to go in our minds on what we're doing on the 17th.
And I believe, isn't the format of that meeting where the zoning is at the top anyway? Or is it not?
We can make it any way we want it to go.
I think we should make it at the top.
Yeah, because most of the folks are gonna be there to hear those things.
Yeah. I don't know if it's a standard thing that we do, but if not, let's go ahead and make that decision now.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Got it.
Motion on that, good idea, great. All right, anything from anybody else? All right, I have, can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, no, excuse me. Excuse me, back up here.
Motion to go into executive session.
Can I have a motion to enter into executive session? So made, okay, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5-0. We're in executive session, we'll come back out in a few minutes. Thank you.
I didn't know we had a good reception.
Will see you plenty on the 17th?
You know, you know, folks, before the session, we had meetings that went to one and we would have 17 of us. Mike was there part of the time, yes, ma'am.
That wasn't too bad.
So, what you think, first, you have seen anything? You're not gonna leave, but I thought that was kinda cool. Me and my friends sometimes talk about that. Motion.
Second.
Second.
Wake up.
Wake up.
Did you hear?
Did you hear?
Yes, you and me.
Yes, you and me.
Clay had surgery a couple weeks ago. He's not supposed to drive yet, so I'm his driver.
Clay had surgery a couple weeks ago. He's not supposed to drive yet, so I'm his driver.
I could carry it to him.
I could carry it to him.
(coughs)
(sighs)
I ain't even sitting down.